Apple time says six.
Would you like to do this?
Good evening. We do have a forum present and I'm calling the meeting, March 17th, 2015, Meeting of the Board of Education, to order. We have a special guest with us this evening, Corinne Carrasco, excuse me, fifth grade student at Hickory Elementary School. And Corinne is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Corinne?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twice I've done that to you.
Welcome, Corinne. Would you like to introduce your family? I think you have some guests with you this evening.
I have my father, my mother, and my two brothers and my sister.
And I think Dad's in the back. All right, very good. Can you tell us about what you really like to do in school and maybe what you don't like to do as much? Just give us an idea of your life at Hickory.
I really like to do math. It's like my biggest strength in elementary school. And I'm not that good at reading.
Okay, are you working on the reading?
A little.
When you do read, do you have a favorite subject or favorite book or something you like to follow when you do read?
We're reading this book. It's called Wonder. It's a really good and interesting book.
Very good. And if you were principal for a day, what would you change?
I wanted to give everybody like an hour of free time, like to like talk to their friends or draw or whatever they want.
All right, very good. I think you ought to have a conversation with your principal, right? Great. Is there anything you would like us to know about you?
Outside of school, I like to play with my friends and I also like to dance.
Great. Any of my colleagues have questions? All right. Corinne, thank you and thanks to your family for being here to support you this evening. Appreciate it. All right, we're now looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you. Dr. Harding is the second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on Dr. Harding's motion. All those in favor? Okay, and the student, it's seven zero with the student concurring. Thank you. And now the minutes.
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session of Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015, of the business meeting, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015, and another business meeting on Tuesday, March 10th, 2015, and the minutes of the public hearing on Tuesday, March 10th, 2015.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Any questions on the minutes or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven zero, student concurred. Thank you. We're now to public comment. We have one individual signed up to speak this evening, Anne Marie Hines, W C E S P, about the budget. If you'd like to come forward, Ms. Hines. Welcome. And you have five minutes if you'd like it. You're fine, take your time.
Good evening. My name is Anne Marie Hines and I am a staff member at South Rock Elementary School and I will be speaking on behalf of the Washington County E S P Association. W C E S P represents over 450 support professionals in our school system. I'm not here tonight to again spotlight to the board the financial hardships that many of our full-time support staff experience since they are not compensated with a living wage. I am here tonight on behalf of our E S P to acknowledge the board's decision to realign the budget and commit themselves to the priority that is the hundreds of E S P, many of whom have served as students of this county for decades. If we want to do what is in the best interest of our children, it is essential that you create a budget that prioritizes the very educators that our students, teachers, and supervisors depend upon. The vote we cast tonight will send a very clear message to every educator in our county. Furthermore, I am pleased by the good news coming to us from Annapolis. The Maryland House Appropriations Committee has voted to restore over 90 percent of the state education cuts from Governor Hogue's budget. Last night, the leaders of the Senate publicly stated that they intend to do the same. All signs point to the state restoring almost $2 million to our local school system budget. This additional funding affords us the opportunity to finalize an adequate budget. Again, this vote is about priorities. As you consider your vote, we hope you show the same concern for educators that we show for the success of our students every single day.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Board members, opportunity for response. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to, oh, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to us this evening that did not have a chance to sign up? We're now moving forward to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have some guests with us who are going to talk about the FAFSA frenzy, which, as most of you know, is an event that was organized by Jeannie Singer and a number of folks who are supporting Greater Hagerstown in our mission as a school system to have as many young people as possible ready to be able to go on to college and careers. The completion of the FAFSA is an important first step for young people in terms of organizing their financial wherewithal to go on to school. And with that, I'm going to ask Jeannie and the team to come up. I know Beth, you're probably leading some of this conversation as well.
Kristi.
Kristi, okay. Well, you fooled me all, so thank you very much.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
It's nice to see you dressed in the color of the day as well, both of you. Must have called each other.
Hold the mic up.
Excellent.
Oh, aren't you the vote?
Christina Williams, the Vice President of the WCPS Education Foundation. Beth Moore is with me. She's a board member of that foundation and we're in an initiative to take over this event from Greater Hagerstown Committee. Jeannie's been instrumental in starting that and getting it going and helping us this year to transition. We estimate that we helped about 150 families over the event of two weekends during February at the Valley Mall. We did partner with the Herald Mail during one Saturday for the Education Expo, which also highlighted several other opportunities for students in our county. As Dr. Wilcox mentioned, the FAFSA is the first step in applying for federal student aid and helping students get to college, figure out their funding and how they're going to pay for it. So it's very important for our students to take that first step to continue into higher education. Our sponsors this year included the Greater Hagerstown Committee, Herald Mail Media, Kaplan University, Dr. and Mrs. Mitesh Khatari, United Bank, Valley Mall, the WCPS staff, and WCPS Education Foundation. We had very experienced financial aid professionals from Frostburg State University, Hagerstown Community College, and Kaplan University that were one-on-one assisting students with completing the FAFSA. We estimate that we served about 70 students in actually completing their FAFSA as high school seniors, several others that we didn't track because they're not high school seniors. Next year, we're going to make that change to see overall how many people are actually helping in this very vital step. Tonight, we want to have you help us with drawing our three winners for scholarship or laptop opportunities, and those are just out of the 130 high school seniors that have completed their FAFSA by March 1st. Any questions before we do the drawing?
Could you, we were talking a little earlier, could you mention something about the non-traditional students that you also served?
Certainly. We saw several students, some from PIA. I know some came from Hagerstown Community College, older students that still need help completing the FAFSA application for federal aid that came into this event so that they can continue their education. Most of those students that are coming to us are the non-traditional students that aren't straight from high school because they're hearing about it through social media or friends, family that are seeing the event publicized.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have you help us with the winners. There will be three winners. And then you just have to push generate. Okay, so number four. Number four is Kashi Amis from North Hagerstown High School. Number 53. Number 53 is Tiffany Hoffman from Williamsport High School. And number 68. And number 68 is Mackenzie Johnson from the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we look forward to having this event in the future. We have some tentative dates for 2016. We just have to make sure everyone's on board for this, but it's something I foresee us doing for many years because, like I said, it's a very instrumental first step and encouraging students that they can go on to higher education with this, you know, very useful step.
Thank you. Christina, I will simply say that as the foundation transitions over into the leadership of this, we're really looking forward to what will happen next and the school system will continue to be a great partner with you. Arnold Hammond and his team do, I think, a marvelous job of coming over and getting the computer network set up, getting the print station set up. We will obviously continue to do that as we go forward and we want to thank you for taking on this leadership role with the foundation, but also with this project. Jeannie, we want to say thank you to you because we know it's been a labor of love for you and Greater Hagerstown. Beth, thank you for what you do each and every day to help our kids aspire to greater things, so thank you all.
Thank you. We couldn't do it without the IT support and we had counselors this year. We're also helping with FAFSA, so couldn't do it without the school system.
Great service to our students and the families.
Absolutely.
That's tremendous. Colleagues, any comments? Thank you very much.
I was remiss in not pointing out the
Congratulations to the three winners.
I was remiss in not pointing out the fact that Robin Handler was just instrumental in making sure that our guidance concerts were engaged and she continually pushed out good information that helped. So Robin, thank you for your leadership and I apologize for not mentioning you in the first.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to unfinished business. We have one item, the second reading of policy ILB, Test Security. Mr. Trotta?
Mr. Trotta, before you begin, I wanted to say to Corinne, thank you. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting though. If you guys want to get up and leave, Mr. Trotta won't mind at all, but if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, okay? I just didn't want you to think you had to sit through this whole meeting. All right. It's really because your brothers look like they want to go, Corinne, not you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you. Good afternoon. During the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting that it conducted on March 3rd, it approved the first reading of the changes to policy ILB, which is entitled Test Security. Since the first reading, members of the public were invited to offer comments. We did not receive any comments. During the Policy Committee's public work session that it conducted on March 10th, the Policy Committee members discussed certain wording changes to this particular policy. At this time, the Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of the proposed changes to policy ILB. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Trotta. This is a formal action and requires a motion.
Madam President, I move for the approval of policy ILB at its second reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Harding's discussion. Mrs. Fisher, you made the motion. Do you want to speak to this?
The policy itself is not very extensive. There will be, obviously, regulations developed by the superintendent later. The changes we made were grammatical or sentence structure. Didn't affect the actual meaning or meat of the policy.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, the question is Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero, and the student concurs. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. All right, new business. We're to the consent agenda. There are five items on that. Mrs. Freeman, welcome.
Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. I hope you can hear me okay.
It's not very loud at this point.
I'll be happy to talk into the microphone, however, that works a little bit better. As mentioned, there are five items under consent this evening for your consideration. The first is to purchase 26 cafeteria tables for Williamsport High School. This recommendation would utilize the NJPA contract. The award would be made to Palmer Hamilton. These would be 26 replacement cafeteria tables at a total cost of $31,476. The price does include shipping, handling, inside delivery, and the warranty that goes with those. Item two on the agenda is a contract renewal. This is a contract that the board authorized last year. It's for on-call maintenance and repair services to our fiber plant. This contract provides for fiber emergency restoration and maintenance services necessary to maintain approximately 30 miles of fiber optic cable and conduit infrastructure. The contract term is effective through April of 2015. It includes options to renew annually for three years. This recommendation is to exercise the first renewal option. The contract is recommended for renewal to Henkel and McCoy at fixed service rates that I've included in the consent agenda for your review. Third on the agenda is a contract to make interior renovations at Marshall Street School. This construction project is to convert two open space classroom spaces into two new closed classroom spaces under the base bid. Conversion of existing spaces to a dining area and activity room are included as alternate bids and they are being recommended this evening. The construction work will commence on June 15th with substantial completion to be achieved by August 7th. Award of this contract is being recommended to A.V. Roth &amp; Sons of Hagerstown at a cost of $125,754.35, and as mentioned, that is the base bid and two alternates. Fourth on the consent agenda is a project to construct interior renovations of Clear Spring High School. This construction project will create a new health suite in two rooms, configure a storage room, media center office, and work room to create a new classroom, reconfigure an existing corridor, storage, and health suites to create a new weight room and vestibule, and reconfigure an existing classroom and art storage room into two new classrooms. Very extensive renovation work in, under the project. It does include an interlocking rubber tile flooring alternate in lieu of vinyl composition tile flooring, and that is being recommended for the weight room. This project will commence on June 15th and achieve substantial completion as planned April, August 7th of 2015. GRC, General Contractor of Zellinger, Pennsylvania, is being recommended for award of this project. The final bid on the consent agenda this evening is a boiler replacement project at Lincolnshire Elementary School. The construction project will replace two existing oil-fired boilers with three new high-efficiency natural gas-fired boilers being installed in about the same location. The work will commence May 4th and substantial completion is anticipated by August 7th. This project is funded by the State of Maryland and as such, it is subject to minority business enterprise participation goals and the recommended contractor, M&amp;E Sales, is planning to achieve those goals and subgoals for the school system. M&amp;E Sales is being recommended at a total cost of $332,999. I hope you could hear that. Concludes my five bids this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Again, this is an action item requiring a motion.
Madam President, I move to approve the purchase of 26 cafeteria tables for Williamsport High School to Palmer Hamilton LLC at $31,476. Renew the on-call services contract for maintenance and repairs to the fiber plant to Henkels &amp; McCoy, Inc. at fixed service rates. Construct interior renovations of Marshall Street School to A.V. Roth &amp; Sons, Inc. at $125,754.35. Construct interior renovations of Clear Spring High School to GCR, General Contractor, Inc. at $144,371. And a boiler replacement project at Lincolnshire Elementary School to M&amp;E Sales, Inc. at $332,000. Let me say that again, $332,999.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion, questions for Mrs. Freeman? And I think Dr. Michael is here as well. Ms. Harshman?
I just have a question about the cafeteria tables. Can you tell me what type those are?
They're the fold-away bench styles that are currently at Williamsport High School. We were aware of concern raised in past board meetings regarding the configuration of our cafeteria tables. We did look into it and I chatted with Mrs. Bishop at Williamsport High School and she felt very strongly that we should have the same standard table that's being replaced in her building for a couple of different reasons. Number one, it seats very large students as well as smaller students comfortably. She felt that for continuity, she wanted the same table throughout her cafeteria. The tables that are there fit in the space well and the students are sort of used to the configuration that's in place.
Well, I understand that, but with modesty being an issue and also the idea of using the cafeteria for something other than the students, when parents come for activities, it's very inconvenient for seating arrangements. Plus, it means that we need some kind of other tables to address situations where you have meetings or something like that in there. So that was one of the reasons that I had suggested that we go back to the tables and chairs, stackable ones, that would prevent either of those problems.
I know that the tables get put away, folded up and put away daily. It's a huge undertaking for the custodian to have to stack a lot of chairs and
It's a huge undertaking for the custodian to have to stack a lot of chairs and tables to make space on a daily basis. So the maintenance staff really likes this fold-away table, and it's used extensively throughout the school system.
Yes, I'm sure they do. It's much easier, but it's not really what I would feel is convenient for the students and the public. Okay, thank you.
Further questions on the consent agenda?
Breitman?
Yes.
Not a question, just a comment. Just as I look through and compare the totals on all of these bids really as compared to the estimates, I just want to compliment your team and the team that puts together these bids and goes through the process. All of them are pretty well below what the estimate of the budgeted amount was on the Marshall Street renovations, $45,000 below the projected budget for the Clear Spring High School, $110,000 less, and for the boiler replacement in Lincolnshire, $149,000 less. Just those three is some $300,000 worth of savings. So thank you and your team for the work in making sure that that happens.
Dr. Harding for recognizing that, but I will also say that the facility staff puts together a nice specification that helps us be successful with the bids.
Looking for any other questions, comments? Then the question on the table is with Dr. Harding's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Second action item under new business is the medical and prescription drug benefit administration services for. Mr. South?
Good evening. Excuse me. In 2013, when the board last awarded the bid for administration of its healthcare benefit, it tasked the staff to rebid the administration of medical and prescription drug portions of the benefit in two years. In response to that request, staff is here tonight to present a recommendation for administration of the medical and prescription drug employee benefits. Answer any questions and request the board's approval of the recommendation to have Cigna administer a bundled medical and prescription drug benefit for Washington County Public School employees. This evening, Mrs. Keller and I are pleased to have with us Mr. Michael Jainer, a senior consultant with our benefits consulting firm, Bolton Partners. Mr. Jainer assisted the staff throughout the entire process from development of the RFP through its analysis and review by the evaluation committee to the eventual adoption of the recommendation by the Employee Healthcare Committee. At this time, Mr. Jainer will walk the board through the extensive evaluation process that occurred to get us to the recommendation that is before you hear this evening for action. Following his presentation, we, of course, would be glad to answer any questions that the board members may have. Mr. Jainer?
Thank you, Chris. All right, just gonna make sure I can get this right so everybody can hear me well. I'm gonna do a fairly... Okay, good. Sorry. My wife always accuses me of mumbling, so I just want to make sure that's not happening. I wanted to give a very high-level explanation of the process that we went through, starting from the point in September where the board signed off on adjusting the current benefit plans in order to be able to go out and solicit bids from various vendors in the marketplace to make sure that the best financial opportunity that balanced the needs of the members along with the needs of the plan was undertaken well. And the reason I'm gonna do it at a high level, I want to make sure we have time for all the questions that I'm sure you'll have. We worked after that board meeting, we worked to revise the RFP as Chris had mentioned, and the intent was to modify it to make sure that it was up to date with a lot of the different configurations from a medical and a pharmacy standpoint that were... that are becoming prevalent in the marketplace. For example, on the pharmacy side, making sure that we were accounting for all of the specialty pharmacy-type things that are increasing costs in the marketplace, but also focusing in on how those costs balance against the needs to make sure members receive the adequate care that they have to have. Once we finalized the RFP, we went through probably a four-week process to make sure that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed and that we had the right forms in place to make sure that we were collecting the information in a way that would allow us to evaluate it quickly and concisely so that we could meet the timeframes in order to, if we did make a change, that there would be adequate time to do the implementation to a new vendor, working towards this board meeting, obviously. The RFP was released in November, and it was done so through the Washington County Public Schools' online purchasing site. Also, one of the things that I think happened this year in partnership with the purchasing group was to make sure that we put the appropriate non-disclosure terms and conditions out there so that all the vendors had to sign off on that before they received any sensitive information about Washington County Public Schools' experience or any membership or anything else that we were using to try and evaluate the best possible cost of administration. The sensitive information was released through Bolton Partners' secure website, so essentially all the vendors had to sign the non-disclosure forms to be... to receive access to our site, which was then enabled them to download the information, and that related to very specific information about the overall plan experience and cost as well as some of the more detailed claims information and census information that we use to have the vendors provide us their best possible quotes. After the information was returned in early January, an RFP committee was formed, and as you read in the board material, it was representative of both management and all the employee groups to make sure that there was adequate representation and review throughout all the different entities within Washington County Public Schools. When that came back, we go through a fairly extensive evaluation process from a technical enterprise standpoint, and we try to separate those very clearly. The technical evaluation pieces focus in on the networks, the claims administration, customer service, health management programs, all the nuances of the day-to-day interactions that both Gina and her team would have as well as what the members would have with the health plan that would be ultimately selected, whether it was staying with the incumbent or moving to a new vendor. There were... So what Bolton does is we provide an overall summary to the evaluation committee or the RFP committee, and that supplements the information that was available to them, which was the entire bid, to be able to... for them to review, have questions, and balance against the types of things that Bolton saw and reviewed during the process. There were multiple discussions around that evaluation, the technical evaluation process, just to make sure that, whether it was from the management side or from the employee group's side, that everybody understood and was able to get clarification on some of the things that either did or did not make sense for them. Based on that evaluation process, we did some preliminary scoring, and that's critical during the process in order to be able to make sure that we're narrowing down the pool of vendor candidates that are going to be moving forward to the vendor interviews. At the end of that preliminary scoring, we did an initial price review, and that was as the prices were provided by the vendors and what types of things that management thought that they needed to have from a health management standpoint, from anything they wanted to do related to wellness or any other service programs, whether it related to different customer service aspects or not. So trying to come up with a comparable set of figures from a preliminary standpoint, obviously, was the first pricing. At that point, two of the vendors were eliminated, both from a cost standpoint and some of the technical deficiencies that they had as well. Those other five vendors were moved forward to finalist interviews. We focused them on some of the questions that we had as part of the initial review process, as well as certain other things that we felt were critical to where the benefits team and what Washington County schools wanted to do moving forward with their programs. Based on those finalist interviews, there were some number of questions that came up afterwards. There was some follow-on information. We asked the vendors to verify their pricing as best and final. That information was taken back. We did a number of secondary pricing discussions, both with the RFP committee and subsequently the overall Employee Healthcare Committee. And once all that review was done, and there was a number of meetings going back and forth between the groups of what made the most sense, the final recommendation to move to Cigna was come out... had come out. You want to cover anything else besides that, Mr. South? That hits at a high level. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. South.
I think at this point, it would be appropriate for us to step back and let the board ask any questions that they may have.
Very good. Thank you. A motion on this action, please.
Madam President, I move to approve Cigna as the Claims Administrator for the Board of Education's Medical and Prescription Drug Programs and provide $300,000-specific stop-loss coverage with a three-year contract beginning July 1st, 2015, at a cost of $7,121,455, and with options to renew for years four and five.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. A second?
Second, Madam President.
Mr. Ridenhour? All right. Open for discussion. Questions?
Madam President, just a couple, if you don't mind.
Ridenhour?
Chris, could you guys, on page three of the material, and I just noticed something here that it was on the pricing summary, if you would. There's a significant... really a $4 million difference between Cigna and any of the other two... or I'm sorry, between Cigna and Care First, $7 million. I mean, how could it be... how can that gap be that large? And that... I'm just trying to figure out how they were able to be $7 million. Am I missing something?
A lot of... and I'll start it off, and then I'll pass it off to the other two folks here. A lot of what Cigna does is claims avoidance. They're very in-tuned with wellness programs. They're very in-tuned with preventive medicine that keeps down on more expensive modalities so that they're... A very good example would be finding out if someone has high... if individuals may have high blood pressure, it's easier to deal with high blood pressure than it is to deal with a stroke two years down the road. Those are the kinds of things that they put into their plan and their program that... and they put a lot of money upfront against that. The amount that they put into a wellness program was almost four times what other vendors offered for a wellness program. Those kinds of things are things that they do to keep down... keep down the high-cost claims in favor of dealing with things before they get out of hand.
The other thing I would add to the cost projection, so it does seem large, and I can understand that over three years. One of the key aspects when we evaluated, especially the claim side, was whether any of the vendors were willing to guarantee what's called the trend. So it's the percentage cost that goes up year over year. So we... in the first year, it was easier to evaluate because Cigna put up a claim target guarantee. So they said, "We guarantee your trend will be X percent in the first year," and Care First did not. And when we pushed Care First on that a little bit, and they continually came back and said that their trend number was almost two times what Cigna was willing to guarantee. So their biggest delta is based on that. The second aspect of it is, you know, it sort of smoothes out a little bit only because we weren't sure... these are estimates. So years two and three are estimates. I mean, if I was smart enough to predict out what that was going to be, I'd be much more wealthy than I am right now. But we... so we set the trend for those second and third years, so everybody was exactly the same. So we didn't give any credit or benefit to any of the vendors going forward, but the key point was that there was a big gap in the percentage that they were willing to project or guarantee.
Thank you. I have something else, but I'll...
Go ahead, I have a few lines.
Well, it's next page. And it's simple. It's just... it calls... things catch your eye. Because this kind of sounds like a catchphrase. "It's down under Cigna Medical, provides minimal member-provider disruption." I mean, what is minimal provider disruption? I mean, what are those things that would be... I mean, when you're changing from one vendor to another, and the members are the people that use it, you know, what's minimal and what's not minimal are going to be different for different people.
Right. And I think what's important here is there will be some disruption. We're not going to tell people that there's not going to be any disruption. I think where the minimal comes in is looking at what type of disruption. As far as primary care physicians, we found no disruption of somebody's family doctor or their general practitioner. Hospitals, laboratories. Where we saw the most disruption would be in the chiropractic field. That's where their network is not as strong as what Care First network is. But as far as day-to-day physicians that you'd be seeing, there was no disruption for our members at all that we found.
Yeah, there was... and there were a couple... that was part of the follow-up, back-and-forth conversations that we had with all the vendors that had some of that disruption. And there was disruption among all of the carriers, even the incumbent. And really, it was trying to focus in on what were their steps and what were their strategies to try and pull some of those providers in during the process. And they've got a couple of different solutions Cigna does that they offered up as part of that follow-up. First was they could create a sub-network for a short time while they were trying to build it out and contract them to the networks that they're utilizing for you right now. The second was members could nominate providers during open enrollment, so that would give, you know, two to three months of additional leverage for them to try and pull those folks in. They also said that they would be willing to try and see if they could backfill with one of their other networks to... for that, for like for the chiropractic, to try and make a change there so that there would be an additional network available. That's some of... those are some of the things that would come out there.
No, that's the kind of answer I would look for because, you know, obviously, if it impacts you... you want to know... particularly if you're dealing with an issue, you want things to be seamless as much as is possible.
And there was one of our finalists that a piece of their network was a large doctor practice here that we know that many of our members go to currently, that was not in their network. And that was a big red flag for us because we couldn't disrupt that much from a primary physician. So we were aware of those things, and all the carriers had to provide very, very detailed information on their networks, and then they also had to match the current physicians that we're using now based on the number of services and based on claims dollars paid. So we had all of that data to be able to evaluate.
I'll come back.
I have some concerns about the mail-order prescriptions. I'm wondering about disruptions to that also. Will Express Scripts provide their records to Cigna, or will anybody who uses mail-order have to completely go through the process again and get everything registered from their doctors and so on?
Okay. They will... they basically do like an... it's called an open auth file. So any authorized prescriptions, any authorized services that are out there, Cigna will take in that from either Express Scripts or Care First, and we've gotten confirmation that Express Scripts would pass it over as well as Care First. So the members that have open prescriptions today can transfer those over to the mail-order.
Can transfer? So they have to do it themselves?
No. They could choose not to.
No, I mean...
So let me make sure I'm answering your question correctly. So I didn't mean to say that it was a... an active situation on their part. If, as part of their implementation, one of the questions that they're going to ask Gina and her team is, "Do you want to transfer all those open authorizations over?" They can do it if that's what Washington County Schools decides is in the best interest of their employees. You could start clean and start fresh again if you wanted to do that for whatever reason. So it's just... I was trying to do it as far as options, the definitive answers to your questions. Cigna will take that file and upload it.
Well, from a personal standpoint, I do have several prescriptions that I have delivered from Express Scripts because I was a former teacher also. And I've had a lot of problems with Express Scripts because they tend to refill far too soon. So I'd wind up with three or four bottles of the same pills stacked up. I'm hoping that is not going to occur with Cigna. It says here that they've got a better auto-refill service, so I'm hoping that's true.
It is, and that was... one of the evaluation committee members pressed that particular issue quite hard with all of the vendors. This individual had almost nine months of medication stockpiled, which, from a member issue, I mean, how do you find that much room, number one? But from a plan standpoint, those are prescriptions that are being paid for by Washington schools as well, so that oversupply is additional cost as well as a burden for the member. So that was pushed pretty hard. And there was... one of the features that Cigna has is there's a number of different ways in which... one of the features that Cigna has is there's a number of different ways in which they will interact with you, by phone, by, by online, or by text message. And there's a feature where you can, you can set up to have, you have to confirm that you want that prescription at that time or not. Whereas with the ESI piece, it, it just kind of happened all over again. And I don't know if you want to share the response that you got back from ESI about having to, being able to change that one all along. You haven't been able to do that.
Right. That's, we did pose that question. We've posed that question since I've been here to ESI. Why? Do we have to continue to get these prescriptions? And, you know, can't we turn this off? Can we change this? And they told us repeatedly, "This is how our system is set up. This is how our system works." When we posed that question to them in, in one of the finalist interviews, then the day after, we got a response back from our team saying, "You know, if you want to change that, I think we can do that for you." So it was slightly frustrating to, to hear that response at that time. But yes, we're hoping for a better, a better outcome and a better, better delivery of those.
Let's hope. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Williams?
No, thanks.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. On the overall vendor scoring matrix, I have a question about the managed care network score. Seeing that Cigna scored lower than our current Care First and lower than, I guess it was the third highest, could you perhaps elaborate on the issues that the committee found with the network? Was it something more than what you described with regard to the chiropractors, or was that basically it?
That, that was, that was primarily...
That was primarily it?
Yeah. We, we tried not to weight any of the individual providers too much higher than the others. So we didn't give more weight to PCPs and hospitals and that. We had a, we had a top 50 for facilities and a top 150 for physicians, as Ms. Keller said, both on the dollars and the services side. So a couple of the chiropractic offices had a lot of visits, obviously because chiropractors see people a little bit more frequently. So that's some of what weighed out in there. But obviously, when you, when you do these bids, your current carrier is going to have much higher match against all those providers. So, but it was, it was really more in that chiropractic and, you know, a couple of other specialties here and there, but nothing...
Right. I just want to make sure, it's not just limited to chiropractic. There might be some other, some other areas. But nothing, that was, that was where we saw a bulk of, of the disruption.
Hirschman?
Was physical therapy one of those places that you saw disruption?
I believe so. I, I'm going to see if I can find it real quick. But I, I believe there was a little bit of that. There was some behavioral health as well was one of them. So I think those were the three major categories.
Right. Care First does have, they have the richest network. They have virtually everybody in their network. So any type of deviation from Care First, you're going to have some disruption. We even saw disruption, when we looked at employees that were going based on services or based on cost, we even had some disruption from Care First, which seems odd. At first, we were wondering, how could that happen? But it were, it was members that were specifically going out of network with Care First. So that's considered to be disruption from the network because they're not utilizing a network providers.
And have we, while he was looking for that, have we talked with other counties that have Cigna, or is there anybody close that we've questioned about this? And what kind of response did we get?
Yes. We've talked with, Allegato Public Schools made the switch last July to Cigna. So we wanted to talk to them about implementation, how their members handled it, how they handled it. They were very happy with the switch over. They did outline to us some, some concerns that they had, but they said that Cigna was very quick to address those concerns. Baltimore County Public Schools had a similar experience. Their experience has been very positive, and they, they communicated that, as well as Montgomery County Public Schools. They have, they have a few different plans, but Cigna is one of the plans that they offer. We did get very positive feedback and reviews from, not only from implementation, but just from ongoing, from a cost standpoint.
No, I would echo the fact that I think it was during the healthcare committee meeting, a couple of the representatives were actually communicating with some of their colleagues at different entities that had made the move to Cigna and, and gave positive feedback as well. And that was beyond the referrals that the, that Cigna gave themselves.
Anything else, Mrs. Hirschman?
No, thank you.
Dr. Harding?
Just briefly, the, just so I'm clear and so everybody's clear, the funding for this comes from the self-insurance fund. Is that right?
The funding for this does come from the health insurance fund, but the general fund pays to the self-insurance fund the board's portion of the premium.
You're a step ahead of me. So the, the funding for this comes from the self-insure, the health self-insurance fund, which is made up of the board's contribution to the employee benefits for health and medical. About 85% of that fund comes from the board's contribution to that benefit, and the other 15 or so percent come from the employee contributions that they make as part of their monthly or bi-weekly premium that they pay for the health insurance benefit. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one more out of curiosity, and we won't take a lot of time because I know we have a long agenda this evening. But I was curious, I think I understand your comment about the distinct advantage to bundling prescription and medical. And I'm looking at Keenan and Optum as separate. I was under some understanding that Keenan, being kind of new to the market, was offering some significant reduction in prescription costs. So I was curious, one, do they only partner with Express Scripts, or do they do something separate? And I'm just curious why their numbers didn't point to that cost savings they had advertised.
At this time, Keenan is only partnering with Express Scripts.
That's, okay, there you go.
Yes, ma'am. And Mrs. Keller and I attended a presentation by Keenan at the MAE offices. I also spoke with the Keenan folks at the Fall ASBO conference. Both times, they, they were very confident of their pricing. They felt that their pricing was more competitive than other vendors. But when they put their pricing on paper, as you can see from the, from the pricing numbers, they were not as competitive as, as some. And we are at least the second county LEA in Maryland to have found out that to be true.
That's what I'm, okay. Enough said. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, the motion is Dr. Harding's motion to accept this recommendation. All those in favor? Looks like a full house, 7-0 with student concurring. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Williamsport High School. We are going to be discussing the, I believe this is the second or third on a public-private partnership construction project for a multipurpose room addition. We have several. Mrs. Bishop, welcome. Mr. Kelbaugh, Mr. Lowe, and Dr. Michael, however you'd like to set it up.
Dr. Michaels will open.
He will? Very good.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Wilcox. Today, on behalf of staff, the superintendents, and Williamsport High School, as well as Williamsport Boosters, we're here seeking your approval of designating $100,000 of the $500,000, the set-aside money for public-private partnerships, to be dedicated to an athletic facility that's been proposed by Williamsport High School and the Williamsport High School Boosters. The proposal would build, as presented to the board back in January, a multipurpose room. I'm waiting for our slides to come up.
They...
Okay. At Williamsport High School, in the back of the high school, behind the current female locker room, and as it starts down the hallway, adjacent to some of the shop areas, there's a proposed addition there. Did provide the board some detailed drawings available in their boardroom at this point, which are about 75% complete. The design of the project would provide a female locker room, similar to the male locker room at the facility. Would provide a multipurpose room, kind of a large square area you see in the center of the, the blue. Provide a concession stand, athletic storage for the school, and a small hallway, approximately 4,000 square feet addition to the facility. Again, the boosters were never in detail proposal back in January. Staff, the board then hired an architect that has about 75% of that work complete. We anticipate that March 23rd, 100% of the documents will be complete and ready for potential bid on the project. Staff and superintendents recommending the potential funding plan for the $933,000 project to include $100,000 from the designated fund balance, $400,000, $402,000 from the boosters, and the balance actually to come from the maintenance department. Part of that money would be part of a quarterly adjustment the board approved a month or so ago, for money that we did not need at Bester Construction contingency, part of the contingency fund for Bester Elementary Construction. So at this time, there's a number of people here that'd be glad to answer questions or share their enthusiasm for the project. But our goal here this evening is to seek your approval of $100,000 coming from the designated balance.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Let's start with the, the motion, and then we'll move into discussion.
Madam President, I move to approve the use of the $100,000 in set-aside funds to support the creation of a public-private partnership between the Board of Education and the Williamsport Wildcat Athletic Boosters Club, Booster Club, excuse me, Inc.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Harding's. All right. Questions, comments? Floor is open. Back around here.
I'll just make a, make a few comments. Thank you for the continued work on this project. I thank you for considering all the things we said last time you were here. And I, I certainly feel very good about where the project's heading. Just to make clear to the public, this designation of $100,000 is not necessarily our approval to spend it. That will only come at such time as the contract comes, when the contract is awarded. But I think with the board's approval of this step in the process, and I have no idea how my colleagues will vote, I certainly will vote for it. And I hope that it shows to you and the people who you're working with to try to, to find the private sector money, that it will be a signal to them that the board supports what it is you're doing. And you can go forth with confidence and try to raise the money to put up the booster's portion of the funds. And I think anytime there's a project, and again, speaking only for myself, a project like this where the board can get two-for-one on its money, I think that's a, a partnership that we ought to explore and be enthusiastic about. If people in the community are willing to work together to raise funds, to improve their facilities, and provide opportunities for kids, I, I would hope that the board would be partners in that. So thank you for the leadership role you're all playing with this, and I look forward to seeing the project go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Questions, comments? Ms. Fisher?
I will also be voting for this project. But I did have some concerns over some information that was provided very early on to the board. And it listed the manner in which the boosters thought they were going to raise the $400,000. And I'm, some of these don't seem very realistic to me, especially in this economy. Some of these large, rather large donations for naming rights and so on. So I do have some concerns, but I understand that the money needs to be raised prior to any construction agreements, so.
Correct. I don't know if other maker, want to make a comment or not. I know they're still fleshing out their fundraising plan, and they're excited to get it launched. They kind of need this support to kind of launch into the big part of that. But as you indicated, Ms. Fisher, our intent would be to have, will be to have all the money in place prior to awarding the bids. But just to follow up with that, we, we currently have planned an April 17 fundraising event where we're going to invite in a list of folks to have a cocktail party and to announce the kickoff of the fundraising. So we have laid the groundwork and have a pretty thoughtful list of the folks that we want to invite in, that we think will be good donors to help us achieve this goal.
Good. Thank you.
Further questions? Dr. Michael, it might be helpful to maybe do the next steps so people in the public have an idea of where we're going. And I'm thinking we are working on a memorandum of understanding that we will execute with the boosters, and then there's basically bid. Can you just sort of walk everyone through this so they understand?
Right now, we're on schedule for our architect, BFM, to complete their work on March 23rd. It'll take a little bit of time to put together some bidding documents. Part of that bidding process might be in-kind services or in-kind goods that some of the donors may wish to provide. So if someone was, were to say, you know, "We're going to donate all the brick for the project," we would get a letter of intent and security for that, and we'd include that in our bid document. Someone's going to do some portion of the work or something. I mean, it would all, it'd be very thought out, be very designated, specifically what's going to be bid. So then we put it out to the contracting community, much like we do other projects, similar to the other projects that you've already awarded this evening. Be out on the streets for like three weeks. We'd secure bids, we'd review scope with low bidder, and we'd bring that information back to the board for approval. Between the time of approval and tonight, our intent would be to bring a finalized MOU to the board for approval. It's possible the MOU might come the same night that the bids are approved, but we try to do this in separate meetings, depending upon how the timing worked out. Our goal at this point, if everything remains on track, is to open this facility November 15th, which would pretty much coincide with the winter sports schedule. And that would eliminate the need for a lot of the transfer right now of weightlifting equipment from one side of a weightlifting, wrestling room, activity room to the other and out into the hallway. So that's kind of our target date of completion if everything remains on track.
Right. And, and I would add that we do have experience as a school system with public-private partnerships, and we have a policy in place, KC and KCR and Exhibits, to really make it very clear and transparent, and everyone knows that this is a very equitable process. Naming rights are also mentioned in that policy. So we have a excellent process in place, and it looks like we have some great partners to work with us to bring this project forward. So, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Then everyone understands the motion is basically to take the $100,000 set aside and set it, designate it for this use, correct? All those in favor? Thank you. 7-0, and student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you.
Mr. Lowe, just because the newspaper is here and this is going to out on Ustream, the cocktail party will not be at the high school. The cocktail party will be at a private residence.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It will not be at the high school.
Thank you very much.
Or at the stadium. It'll be at a private residence.
Thank you.
Good catch, Dr. Wilcox. Thank you. All right. Fourth item under consideration this evening is a donation to North Hagerstown High School from North Hagerstown High School Boosters in the amount of $8,818.
Mr. Akers will present this recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Akers, welcome.
Good evening. President Breitman, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. I'm here for two matters. First, on behalf of North Hagerstown High School, I am requesting your approval of a generous donation of $8,818.10 from the North High Booster Club. The money will be used to offset expenses of the, of the athletic program, including equipment and entry fees for both girls' and boys' athletic teams. They would greatly appreciate your approval.
And I would greatly appreciate a motion. We don't want this money, right?
Madam President, I move for the acceptance of the gift in the amount of $8,818. the gift in the amount of $8,818 to North Hagerstown High School.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings, for saving us. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour, any discussion? As always, thank you, and extend our thanks. This is always helpful when we have partners. It's about building community, so please thank.
Thank you. Secondly...
We should vote?
We should vote.
I know. I can say thank you during my discussion, can't I?
Well, he was starting on the second one, though.
Well, we have to vote on this, and then I can thank him for the second one, too, can't I?
Yes, but he was starting without share voting. That's what we're pointing out.
Should we have a vote now? All those in favor of the motion? Great. Seven zero. Student concurs. Thank you very much. Now on to the second one. And we're going to need a motion for this one, too? Sorry. Mr. Akers.
On behalf of the Career and Technology Department, I am requesting your approval of the generous donation of a variety of maintenance and construction materials valued at $136,313.26 from the NIH's Fort Detrick Maintenance Facility. The materials will be used by CTE programs at Washington County Technical High School, Williamsport High School, and Boonsborough High School.
Thank you. All right. I'm seeking a motion.
Madam President, I move for the approval of a donation valued at $136,313.26 to the Washington County Public Schools from the National Institute of Health Fort Detrick Maintenance Department.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion?
I have one brief question. How is it that this gift came to us? I mean, they're in Frederick County, not suggesting they should have given it to Frederick County, but what's the connection that brought this opportunity to Washington County?
Earlier, there was a competitive process to kind of seek out these donations, and we succeeded that time. And actually, I should say, you know, a lot of this is, the efforts of George Phillips, our supervisor of CTE. And because we were successful that time in seeking out the bid, they kind of reached out to us to do it this time.
Excellent. Building communities. Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again. The question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Thank you very much, Mr. Akers.
Thank you.
Seven zero, and student concurs. All right. Onto the consideration, some first reads to resend. And Mr. Trotta? Good evening.
The Policy Committee, in consultation with staff, is undertaking a comprehensive review of Section I of the policy manual, which is entitled "Instruction." During the Policy Committee's public work session that was conducted on March 10th, it commenced its review of the following policies: IC, which is entitled "School Year," ICA, entitled "School Calendar," ICAA, "School Holidays," ICB, "Extended School Year," and ID, "School Day." As part of its review, the Policy Committee studied the Education Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the state administrative regulations, and existing board policies on these matters. The Policy Committee made the following observations. It's been more than 25 years since these policies have been reviewed. Four of the five policies are now covered under state law, that is Section 7-103 of the Education Article of the Annotated Code, and that Policy ICA is covered by Exhibit For these reasons, the Policy Committee is offering the following recommendations to the Board of Education. First, that Policies IC, ICA, ICAA, ICB, and ID be rescinded, and that Exhibit BDF-E2 be examined further, determine if it should be modified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading to rescind Policy IC, entitled "School Year," Policy ICA, entitled "School Calendar," Policy ICAA, entitled "School Holidays," Policy ICB, entitled "Extended School Year," and Policy ID, entitled "School Day."
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mrs. Fisher, it's your motion. Would you like to have first crack at it?
Thank you. As Chair of the Policy Committee, I have been looking at a number of other LEAs' policy manuals, and I've noted that a number of them actually, in their preface or on a page just before they start the policies, they'll mention specifically that if something is in COMAR, in school law, that they will not repeat it in their policies. And so, as we have been rescinding a number of policies over the last year, year and a half, we're bringing ourselves in line with what many of the other school systems are doing.
Thank you. Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Thank you. Seven zero. Student concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the last item under consideration for formal action this evening, and it is the consideration of our FY 2016 general fund operating budget. It is still a draft budget at this point. We're open to further questions. We're certainly open to amendments. Our meeting, we will be taking the final product from this evening to the March 24th joint meeting with the county commissioners, and then again, as we get final numbers from the state and final numbers from the county, after we meet with them, if there's any necessary revisions, we have time in May and June to do that, and then this becomes our working document July 1st. So, Mr. South?
Well, good evening again, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. On February 16th, the board met in a work session during which the superintendent and his staff presented the superintendent's draft budget for fiscal year 2016. For those in the public who may not be aware, that budget was developed using a three-tiered approach. Tier one reflected proposed reductions and eliminations required to make the system whole after a projected reduction in revenue of nearly $2 million and incremental expenditures that were added in the current year that will recur in FY 16. Tier two showed nearly $1.3 million in new educational incentives, along with a plan to cover those costs, and finally, tier three contained a proposed salary resource pool. Two weeks later, on March 3rd, the board adopted its own draft budget, and last week, on March 10th, you heard the report of the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, as well as input from various stakeholders. Throughout this entire process, the board and the staff have worked under the premise that the local funding would be only at the maintenance of effort level, which is nearly three-quarters of a million dollars less than the amount that was provided in the current year. A copy of your draft budget was included in the packet that you received over the weekend to assist board members with any final deliberations in which you might engage this evening. So tonight, you're scheduled to adopt the final FY 2016 general fund budget to present to the commissioners, as Mrs. Breitman had noted, next Tuesday, and at this time, staff requests that the board adopt its final fiscal year 2016 general fund budget, with any adjustments or amendments that it believes are appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. South. Motion?
Mrs... Madam President, I move for the adoption of the board's FY 2016 draft budget as its final approved budget for FY 2016.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Fisher, thank you. All right. We are open for discussion, questions, amendments. We have staff here, and Dr. Wilcox? Yes, sir?
Madam President, I'd like to make an amendment. I move to amend the budget by eliminating the following expenses. Number one, on page 28, line three, crossing guards for $214,433. Page 28, line four, substitute crossing guards for $16,000. Page 28, line eight, school resource officers for $578,000, and that the resulting $808,433 in savings reallocated as follows. Page eight, I'd like to add a line between lines 46 and 47, labeled "Contingency Teachers" for $808,433. And finally, in accordance with the recommendations from the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee that during our budget presentation on March 24th, we asked the Board of County Commissioners to directly fund the cost of crossing guards, crossing guard substitutes, and school resource officers.
Okay. I was trying to write it down. You have it written down in case we need it?
Yes, ma'am.
Repeat it. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. We have an amendment on the floor. Is there any need for clarification on the amendment? I'll try to summarize, and then Mr. Ridenhour can read it back. My understanding is that we're eliminating on page 28, line three, four, and eight, that would be the crossing guards, the substitute crossing guards, and the school resource officers for a savings of $880,433, and we would add that on page eight, between line 46 and 47, contingency funds, and we would make the request for this money at our meeting, joint meeting with the county commissioners on the 24th. Did I get it?
Just to make certain that the contingency is for teachers.
Contingency, teaching positions. You made the motion, Mr. Ridenhour, originally, amended?
Yeah. If I may, just very quickly, one of the things that I heard loud and clear was a concern about class size and about the loss of teaching positions, having these contingency teachers. Obviously, we have used in the past, when bubbles do occur, we want to be in a position that we can address those without going through a difficult realignment of the budget at that particular point in time.
All right. Discussion on this amendment to the draft budget. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, looking at page 28, under Supplies and Materials. If we're going to make that request of the commissioners, would we not also want to include that $3,000 line item for crossing guard uniforms and supplies?
Sorry, page 28, what line?
I'm looking at line 11.
So you're asking Mr. Ridenhour to amend his amendment to include any associate cost with crossing guards?
Specifically, I have no problem with that.
Is everyone all right with that addition to that amendment?
And what line is that? Mrs. Williams?
It's 11.
Yep.
Page 28.
11?
Mm-hmm.
Madam President, if I might also point out, on that same page, line 14, the travel on that line...
A portion of that goes to...
That is paid to the crossing guards who work multiple intersections as they drive from one location to another to do the various times during the day.
Mr. Ridenhour, may we add that?
Is it the entire $10,000? Mr. South?
It's...
Okay.
Everyone clear on this final addition? Or addition at this point?
One other item, if we might...
Yes?
Since we're picking up salaries, we'll also pick up some FICA and workers' compensation on that, which would bring the total for that item to $855,580.
Wait a minute.
Mr. South, could you give me that number again, please?
Because we started out with $880,000...
803.
No, it was 808. 808. Ah, there we go. Okay. What is the new number?
855,580.
And it will include FICO in addition to the other two items?
That includes the FICA and the workers' comp.
Travel and the uniforms. So is everyone clear on the final motion, amendment? Any further questions, comments on Mr. Ridenhour's amendment?
Madam President?
Yes?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to intend to support the amendment. I, too, heard, we got a number of emails as well since the budget hearing from people concerned about, I guess, class size generally is the way people put it. Also, some of the speakers here a week ago concerned about burdens on teachers, which is sometimes caused by too many students in their class. But I want to make clear that even with this $850,000, if that were to end up going to create all-new teachers, that's probably, Mr. South, correct me if I'm wrong, 10, 12 teachers or so, if all that money was spent to hire new teachers?
Yes, sir. That would be approximately 10 to 12 teachers.
And just, just to make clear what the scale of that is, if one were to take all of the regular classroom teachers, our special ed teachers, our career technology education teachers, that's about almost 1,300 teachers in the system. And if you divide the number of students we have by that number of teachers, you get about 18 to one. To reduce that average class size from 18 to one down to 17 to one, you'd have to hire about 65 total teachers. So we're not close to being able to make that kind of a change with this budget adjustment. However, it certainly would give the superintendent and the staff the tools that they might need to address the concerns such as the gentleman from Cascade raised about a particular class that is large, and because it's a very small school, do you divide one class up into two and then have two classes of 14 or 13? It might give him some tools to address some of those little pockets. So just before we vote on it, I just wanted the public to understand that this is, this is not going to bring everybody's class across the county down, but I think it will give us the opportunity to address some issues where there are enrollment bubbles in particular And, yeah, that's, I'll just leave it at that.
Official comments, questions? Does everyone understand this motion as stated? Any clarification needed? All those in favor? One, two, hold on a minute. Looks like six opposed. We have a six... Mr. Gessford, no vote anyway. Four against, no vote. We have one no vote, six supporting, and the student concurs with the majority. All right. We're back to the amended draft budget, and looking for other discussion, other amendments, questions?
Madam President, I made the motion on the budget, so I just want to make a few comments about the budget before we get too far into the amendments. I appreciate all the individuals who came and spoke last week. I appreciate all the ideas and suggestions that... I appreciate all the ideas and suggestions that people have sent to us. There are many and some quite creative, as creative as, don't buy any more plantains to serve in cafeterias in the lunchroom because kids don't like them. Of course, that's in a separate budget than what we're working on now, but I appreciate the thought and the energy that, that went into that. The comments from our discussion with the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee about 85% of this budget being people, I think was not intended to say that we're paying too much or that we don't value our people. I think, well, what it said to me anyway, is that when you have a budget that's 85% personnel costs, when you're short of funds because your funding has been cut, there really aren't many places to get it other than personnel, which none of us wants to do. And just to put that into perspective, in a $260 million budget, if 85% of the funding goes to people, that's $39 million that goes for everything else that the school system does. That keeps the lights on, it buys the school bus, the school buses, it buys all the supplies, it buys the fuel for the school bus. Everything else that we do has to come out of that $39 million. And if we want to come up with resources for more personnel, it's got to come out of that $39 million unless you want to take it from other personnel. So, you know, I know the comment was made that we're balancing the budget on the backs of our employees. I'm not sure I think that's a fair characterization. The reality is, that's all we've got unless we're to go and ask the commissioners or ask somebody else for another source of funds. So to write a budget that individuals say reflects the right priorities, we have to either cut from that 39 to come up with other resources, cut from personnel, or go ask for more funds. And at this point, nobody's made a motion to ask for more funds from the commissioners. Maybe someone will here tonight. I can't, since I made the motion to approve the budget. But were somebody to do that, I certainly have heard loud and clear from the business community how much they value what we do as a public school system and how much they support what we do as a public school system. And I would certainly support any motion that would ask the commissioners for more funds to provide the kinds of resources and compensation that I think our employees deserve. Thank you, Ms. Bright.
Thank you. Dr. Huardings, all right. We have a budget in front of us. Mrs. Harshman?
I'd like to make a motion that we not fill the position of Associate Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer since we have, for the past two years, had that position empty more than we've had it filled. I think that would be a big boost to the money that we're looking for. And I think in a time when we ask teachers to do more and to take more on, we need to ask everybody to do that. So I would like to move that that position be?
Do you have the page and line item?
The line item does not have just the, that person's salary on it. The page is five, but I'm looking at the, the sheet with the ladder, the?
Mr. South or Dr. Wilcox, that position, what is the amount we're looking at there?
The amount of position, if we, in this budget and our tier-two cuts, we also eliminated another associate superintendent position, so it would be right in line with that. And that savings was $155,740.
$155,740.
$154,000.
I think you should point out that that's salary and benefits, and the benefits load is about 30%, so.
So that is loaded, that's the full obligation?
But that also would be in the Office of Instructional Services, which is on page five. Is that correct? Thank you.
And where would you place that money? Your motion needs to have two parts to it?
And I would place that in the reserve for the salaries.
You're moving that to the salary pool?
Yes.
Does everyone understand the motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Discussion on the motion of not filling the position of Associate Superintendent of $155,740 and adding that to the salary pool. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Williams?
I have a question. You're saying that that amount is the salary and benefits? So what about the FICA charges that we looked at? That's there. I'm not understanding why that would be, so, so there's no?
If you eliminate position, you eliminate the FICA.
Right, 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 I understand that. But to find, but to find that position listed under the Office of Instructional Supervision, we can't find that solely because it's lumped together, is that correct?
It would be in the professional regular programs line, which would be the first line at the top.
Okay, so it's somewhere within that $2 million?
Part of those 19 positions.
Okay, okay. I just think it would be helpful if we could see that separated out, so we know that what?
Right, and while we're talking about benefits, it's important to note also that healthcare benefit is included in that number. I believe the salary on that position was somewhere around $125,000 to $128,000.
Okay, thank you, that helps me understand.
Madam President?
Yes?
I, I will not support the amendment. In this budget, the superintendent's already recommended eliminating one associate superintendent position. He's also eliminated another administrator position, which is the Development Office Director. Last year, we eliminated two other assistant principal positions. I think the superintendent has clearly shown, as he's tried to trim the budget, that he has taken people from the top, the, from the executive office. And I think this, I think leaving the Department of Instruction without an associate superintendent, in addition to creating an unnecessary burden on other people, I think it sends the wrong message.
Thank you, Dr. Huardings. Other comments, questions? Ridenhour, was that a straightening your glasses or, okay?
No, just being able to see.
So the motion before us, Mrs. Harshman's motion to not fill the associate superintendent position equivalent to $155,740 and then putting that money into the salary pool. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, and the student concurs, the motion fails. Three votes and four in opposition. Thank you. That was the second amendment. Any other questions, comments, amendments? Mrs. Williams?
Just some, some discussion. My understanding is that within this budget, there's $1 million that was to be used for the iLearn initiative, is that correct?
There is $1 million.
If we were to take that $1 million from this budget, from what? And I understand that that's in various categories.
Do we have a line item on that?
I think it's various.
The decks are spread among three lines.
It's three.
Four lines.
So it was total in the tier summary?
Yes, it was in the tier two summary.
Okay, so it's, is it all on one page or is it on several pages? Because my underst-
It's on two different pages.
Okay.
If you look at page eight, it is on lines 73 and 74, the $100,000 and the $400,000. And then if you go back to page 26, it is on line 21, 30, and 46. So there's a half a million dollars in the two areas.
Okay, but a total of $1 million in the entire?
Correct.
So my thought is this, if we were to move this $1 million from these various line items into the salary pool, and when the time comes for us to address this initiative, to take $1 million out of the fund balance, to take care of those needs, is that something that we can consider? Is there, I'm looking for just discussion here as to why that isn't a logical?
And you would need to make a motion and we'd have the discussion?
I thought we were discussing the motion, which is to approve the budget, so I see this as part of the discussion of that motion. And based on that discussion, then I would be prepared to make an amendment. Am I, am I out of line there with discussing?
You're not out of line. I just thought you were looking to make a motion, so I was offering to accept the motion.
I'm just looking, I'm looking for some discussion as to why that wouldn't be something that we would want to consider. I'm, I'm thinking that in the past two years, we have had, what, $3 million in the past two years? Go into the fund balance at the end of each of those years. We have $719,000 going in this quarter. So I'm thinking that it's not unlikely that we'll end this year with at least a million, maybe more? You wouldn't want to?
Wouldn't want to hazard a guess on that, just off. We did take more in the second quarter adjustments this year than what we normally do. We looked further out toward the end of the year. I do believe that there'll be some additional adjustments, whether, what that will be, I'm not, not sure at this time.
Mrs. Williams, if I could just hop a minute, if that's all right?
Sure, sure.
The, my concern is that making the fund balance part of this discussion, the fund balance really isn't involved with the original motion of the draft budget. The first part of your discussion or question certainly does fall within the purview of our discussion tonight. So I'm not sure if you combine that all together, that we could do that tonight, but we could certainly have a discussion on the million-dollar tech money and putting that into the salary pool, which was the first part of your discussion.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dr. Oden.
Well, my only question would be, can you, Chris, or Dr. Wilcox, or Mrs. Williams in particular, explain to me exactly what part of our technology expenditures are you referring to, the million dollars? What are we not going to have as a result of that million being taken out of the budget and put into a salary pool?
Am I able to?
Sure, absolutely.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is there are various things, hardware, software, things that deal with the infrastructure, that total $1 million. Those items were part of the initiative that we've decided not to do at this particular time. That's not to say that it won't happen sometime in the near future. And what I'm saying is, at that time, we look at the fund balance for that money and use the $1 million that we have here designated for that particular initiative to put into the salary pool. That's my thinking.
Well, my problem with that, that is, and the reason I couldn't support it is, if we are, if we're moving forward with some type of, of technology initiative, it is not a one-time expenditure. It will become a recurring expenditure. In other words, each year, each year, our technology, there are items in our budget that deal with technology, whether it's through the technology initiative that we've discussed, which I don't think we ever voted down, but that we discussed, and other technology, hardware, software, whatever the case might be, that we yearly turn over. In other words, you know, every year, we have to buy more technology, you know, just to keep up with the changes in the technology through the course of, of just the normal, normal changes that occur. So trying to pull it out of the fund balance, you know, we can't do that if it's a recurring cost, and technology is a recurring cost. It's been in our budget for the 12 years that I've been on the board.
Mrs. Bright, may I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is there is money in there for technology. And above that technology, there was an additional $1 million for this particular initiative. So there is technology money in that budget for recurring expenses. Am I wrong? Sort of, totally, totally?
No, not totally. There, in our existing budgets, there are dollars for technology. But we're right now on about a six-to-seven-year replacement cycle of our technology. We did not put the million dollars in to fund the tech initiative. We put it in because we wanted to accelerate our replacement schedule. And to the point that Wayne was making, the fastest way to do that is to go into a lease purchase arrangement with Apple, or whoever the successful bidder. But we talked primarily to Apple. And to do that, over the course of three years, we had to have within our budgets, not the approximately $2 million that's kind of moving through different accounts, but 3.5. So this was also an attempt to do that. We're trying to kill two birds with one stone, if that makes sense. So I would prefer that the million dollars stay, but I certainly understand what you're attempting to do, kind of defer the decision down the road. So I understand that. I just don't think that in, in this case, it's necessarily the wisest move because even in the absence of kind of a refined tech plan, we are moving ahead with lots of great technology initiatives within the district. And we haven't slowed down our purchasing at all. And anticipation of this, I've tried to look at, you know, would that, would taking the million dollars and moving it make some sense? But I can't, as a superintendent, I can't support saying, "No, let's not." But I certainly would be governed by the majority of the board. But again, I want to say, once again, that we're not, right now, as a system, with the money that's currently in our budget, I think providing an adequate technology-based infrastructure for the kids of our school system. That's why that million dollars is there. It's not there, per se, to fund the digital learning initiative.
Madam President?
Yes?
I would, because I knew the technology would be discussed tonight. Earlier today, I went through and looked at every single consent agenda we've had for the last year and looked for devices that we've purchased. So we're not talking about network switches or routers or anything of that sort, servers, only devices that ends up in the hands of our teachers or our students. In the last 12 months, we've purchased about $1.9 million worth of devices that are directly in the hands of students or directly in the hands of teachers. I would, I would argue that figure's not going to go down. And whether we do the iLearning initiative or not, I don't believe that figure's going down. And my concern with putting the budgeted dollars for technology into salary and then possibly later replacing them with fund balance is you're replacing an ongoing, continuing fund with one-time funds. And that goes to the sustainability. I mean, you can make the same argument, if I, if I make the argument in reverse, say, "Well, why not take a million dollars worth of fund balance and use that to pay salaries?" Well, the answer is, because you can do that for one year, but next year, you don't have the million dollars to pay what you paid the year before. And I think the same is true in reverse. If you take the million dollars out of the budget that's for technology and replace it with fund balance, then you can't be investing in technology the year after. So you can't, you won't have those funds available the year after in your budget to continue that investment in technology. So that's, that's why I wouldn't support it.
Mrs. Harshman? Mrs. Harshman.
Well, I will support it because I think that above and beyond technology, our employees need to feel rewarded for the work that they've done and for the time that they've spent in our county. And I think to substitute them for technology is a gross injustice. So, I will be voting for it.
Well, it's not a motion at this point, it's just a discussion.
Okay, well, I will be supporting it, then.
More discussion. Mrs. Williams, would you like to take it to the next step or not?
I find, you know, I find this, the discussion about the fact that 85% of this budget is people. And I wonder sometimes if we look at the budget in a way that we fund everything else and then what's left, we think about what we can give to the people who are truly our greatest asset. They are our greatest expense, but they are our greatest asset. So, you know, maybe we should be giving some thought to thinking about them first and giving them compensation. Yes, we, we thank them. We show our appreciation to them in numerous ways. But I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we give them a living wage and that we reward them with a step increase or a percentage to whatever degree we can when we ask so much of them, day after day, year after year. So, that said, and realizing that this is going to be voted down, I move to amend the budget to remove one million dollars from the various line items.
Line item, it's page eight, 73 to 74, and page 26, lines 21, 30, and 46.
Thank you, for those line items that Mrs. Brightman just mentioned. And to move that one million dollars into the salary pool.
We have Mrs. Williams' motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Whoops, who wants it? Mr. Gesford or Ms. Harshman?
Doesn't matter.
Ms. Harshman? Okay, any more discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I may please end up with, do not want to come across in any way that I, Ms. Williams, my apologies if this comes across in the wrong way. I do not like the fact that we are continually pitting different elements of what we use to educate our students against each other. Technology is an important element in our, in our educational program, exceptionally important. It's more important each and every day. I don't think any of us, other than maybe, you know, I don't think all of us, myself included, appreciate how much more technology is being utilized in the business community and in, in other areas. I hear over and over again about people saying to me, "Well, you know, I got it done that way. My teachers were able to teach me," or a teacher will say, "I was able to teach my kids without a computer in my classroom." Yes, you were. You were able to do that, and I applaud it. I did it. But I would have given my left arm to have access to the type of technology we have today. When I, when I assigned research papers in my history courses, you know, my kids had access to a library that might have had three books on the topic that they were researching. Today, they can go online and go to NYU's library and have millions of documents that deal with the same thing that my kids only had three books. I cannot imagine doing my job without, and this is ancient technology, the HP12, you know, computing calculator, the business calculator. And I can't imagine, you know, trying to do my job as efficiently as I do it now without programs that allow me to draw pictures and, and other elements so that I can use those in my reports. So, be it technology or whatever, I remember one time, not too long ago, not too far in the distant past, where we were in a position of, of, that we had to take things out of that 15% that you're referencing. And they included band. It took us 10 years to recover, and we've never really recovered, to get bands back into the schools where they were viable. And they never have gotten back to where they were before that happened. And this, you know, this could happen, I mean, as Dr. Harding said, there's only so much money in that 15%, and there's an awful lot of stuff that goes on in that 15% that I don't think we pay attention to sometimes. You know, we've added and managed to keep that good split at 85-15, and we've added sports that were not available when I was teaching. We've added other activities that entice our kids to stay in school. There are an awful lot of things that happen in that 15% that are, to me, are vital. And that's not saying that I don't want to see our teachers have a, a good wage. I do not want to talk about what they make or anything that, in that respect at this point in time because I think we would be overstepping when we're still in negotiations. So, I'm not going to support it. I, you know, like I said, I, I'd like to, to see more money in that pool, but not at the expense of some of those things that I think we absolutely need in the future for our kids to get the kind of education that they're going to need to compete.
Thank you, Mr. Brightman. Are there other comments?
I have.
Yes, Dr. Wilcox.
I recognize this is the board's conversation, but I, I want to say something because, in essence, the board is acting on the superintendent's recommendation. And, you know, as I listen to board members who are colleagues and friends, I think sometimes we say things that we don't really think all the way through. I know I'm guilty of that sometimes. But, you know, I, I don't think that there is a person here who began this discussion about building a budget. Now, Chris, what, six, seven months ago when we started this?
Yes.
That didn't put what was best for the entire system first and foremost in our minds. We have to make some tough decisions. There's no doubt about that. But, you know, we'd be sitting here talking about other things if we had gone about a different path. And let me explain that. We divided this up into really three chapters, if you'll remember. And I'm pretty sure that people would be talking to me about what was happening to class size, even if we hadn't presented the budget in the way we had. So, let me give you an example of that. One of the first things we had to deal was deal with 1.9 million dollars in lost revenue. Now, perhaps some of that's going to come back and we'll amend the budget if that happens. But, you know, one of the other things we had to do is balance the budget against expenditures. And I want to talk about the kind of expenditures that we made. One elementary interventionist, which is a person who helps our needy children, we added that. We added two middle school art teachers. We added an itinerant English language arts to English, English language learner specialists because of the influx of Hispanic children in this community. We added a special education life skills teacher during the course of the year. We added a custodial unit. We picked up some support for Children's Village because 2,000 of our kids visit Children's Village, and they couldn't financially make it and stay open. And we thought the public safety issue of Children's Village was important. We took a look at our elementary students in math who are struggling with some of the, the basic concepts, and we added Stride Academy because we wanted to give our teachers and our kids one more tool. We added compensation to our nurses who deal with our most valuable and vulnerable children. We had to suffer the increase in school resource officer costs. We covered another additional percentage of health insurance. And then we used all those things. Now, if we'd have said, "No, we're not going to do that," we'd have 2 million more dollars. But you would have been sitting here saying to me, "Clayton, we need English language learner teachers. We need school nurses. We need, we need, we need." So, we had to balance the budget. And we balanced the budget with 5 million dollars. So, we had to make some cuts. Now, again, I, I know that none of you are trying to impugn the staff, but I got to tell you, as they sit back there and they hear you say that we don't value our employees, I got to tell you, there's nothing further from the truth. Now, are our priorities the same as every individual employee in this district? Perhaps not. But we have not only 3,000 employees that we're trying to balance against, keeping people employed. There are no reductions enforced in this budget. But we also have 22,000 children and their families that we're responsible for. So, again, I would encourage you, if you want to move money around in the budget, feel free to do that. But I don't think you need to attack staff and the priorities that they've made because they're sitting right here in front of you. And to say that they don't care, which is what you're saying when you say that we didn't have our priorities right, I think is, is, it's troubling to me as a superintendent. Now, you may say, "That's not what I said. That's what I heard." And I can tell from looking at the faces of my staff, that's kind of what they heard, too. So, again, if you want to move stuff around, you are the elected board. We accept that. But you don't need to impugn the integrity and the intention of the staff members who prepared this budget for you. So, I know that was a bit of a rant, and for that, I apologize. But I will tell you that, sitting here silently, having had months of this, was just a little more than I could take right now. We deal with this 12, 14 hours a day. I'm not sure that any of you sitting at this table, as dedicated as you are, can make those same comments. You've hired me as your superintendent to lead. That's what I'm doing. We'll be guided by you, however, as the policymakers. But once again, please don't impugn the reputation of those who have worked so hard to preserve this budget. If we could have given step increases, we absolutely would have. If we could have given percents beyond that, we absolutely would have. There's not a person sitting in this room who would not have done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Mrs. Harshman, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. I just would like to reiterate that there is no substitute for teachers. Students can use technology on their own, but they cannot get the same interaction and support that they get with a teacher with a computer. So, if push came to shove and you have to pick one or the other, it seems logical to me that in an educational situation, you pick the best resource that you have. And to me, that would be the teachers. So, I agree that money should be set aside ahead of time for, specifically for salaries. And from there, everything else could fall in line. Then we can be looking for money for things that maybe are not as significant as teachers.
Once again, our budget does not pit teachers against technology or technology against teachers.
No, the budget doesn't, but someone else did. So, I just, I'm reiterating that by putting those two in place, it's...
That's, all right. I would like to wait for Mrs. Williams to be able to come back. It's her motion. She should be able to vote on this. So, we're going to have a short recess. Five, six minutes. Let her get herself back in here, and then we'll have the vote, okay?
Jamie, would you take the mics down?
And we're still under discussion of the budget and the Mrs. Williams' motion. Is there any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion we're considering? All those in favor? Motion fails. Student concurs with the majority. All right. We're back to the budget. We have one amendment on the draft budget at this point. Any other discussion? Any other amendments?
I'd like to take a shot at amendment.
Have at it, Mr. Gessford. Maybe this is the magic one.
All right. I would like to, I guess, reduce, instead of eliminate, reduce the line item on page eight. Line item 73. Back to the original seven, or 275,000, reducing it by the 100,000.
Okay. Hold on just a moment. Let's be sure we have that line, 73.
Yes.
And you would like to take it from the 100, no, 375?
Back down to the 275. Also, the one right below it, under the line item 74, keeping it at $1 million, reducing it by 400,000. Then, reduce under travels on page...
Okay. I'm a little concerned about mixing too many things together, so I'm trying to...
Okay. Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the, to reinstate the eliminated teacher positions for the five elementary 5K with benefits, and to reinstate the five elementary lead teacher positions. That's a total of 659 something.
The, Madam President, the contingency teachers were included in my motion.
They are back in?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
It's all part of that motion.
Well, then, I'd like to actually put it back into the salary pool, then.
This money, the money that you're referencing right now?
Yes.
The line 73 and 74?
Right.
Which would be a total additional money to the salary pool of 500,000.
Right.
Okay. And that's the motion at this point. Okay. Staff, do we, we're all together on that? It's all page eight, total of 500,000.
I mean, that's not, that's not eliminating it. That's still leaving it what we had before.
We understand, and that would be moving 500,000 from those two lines to the salary pool, is your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirschman. You made the motion first. Mr. Gessford, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just think that we need to start thinking about maybe a savings account, and for our teachers for next year. It seems like, to me, that we're giving them the crumbs. And I don't want to do, I don't want to do this, I don't want to be in a situation next year, that if we start maybe thinking about putting some money back, and we're not really taking away from what we already have, because I know it's important to keep your line item for your, your technology. I think that's, you know, I think it does, it says something, but it also says, we're going to reduce a little bit. When you don't have the money, you need to start looking at, you know, how can you just reduce a little bit by not eliminating? Everybody does it in a household budget. You know, if you want to buy something and you don't have enough, you have to save for it. And if you want to, you know, think about maybe teachers and the ESPs next year for all staff, maybe this is, this is a way to start. It's not going to answer the full question, but it'll be, you know, a law to our staff saying that at least they're, they're trying. So, that's where, that's where I'm starting.
Okay. Further discussions, questions? Mrs. Fisher?
Well, the page eight is under, obviously, classroom instructional programs and the small equipment and supplies. While I don't have the master plan in front of me, I think maybe that has been raised because of the new science curriculum, which is lowering many of the labs and so on that were done in high school traditionally to middle school, and creating new labs for the high school. Therefore, they need a lot of equipment. That stuff is expensive. But this could be, this is small equipment for any class, not just, I mean, we're talking art, we're talking, what else? Home ec, we're talking gym, it needs equipment.
Mrs. Fisher, maybe...
These two lines that Mr. Gessford is referring to, these are part of the two lines we just inquired, mentioned. So, they're not, they're for...
Technology?
... supplies is PCs, iPads.
They're still technology.
They're part of that $1 million.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
And we're not eliminating it. We're keeping it at what we had last, last year. We're just taking what we had and thought we were going to increase and set that aside, set that aside again for the teacher's salary pool. So, we'd still have what we had last year to spend.
But again, this was part of the previous motion, correct? Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay. We have a, Mr. Gessford's motion on the floor to reduce line items 73 and 74 on page eight by 500,000 and add that to the salary pool. Everyone understands the motion before us? All those in favor? And student concurs with the majority. The motion fails. All right. Still looking for additional questions? Discussions closed on the draft budget?
Madam President?
Yes, Dr. Harding's.
I got to say, I'm, I'm pretty surprised, after all the people who came last week and asked us to go to the commissioners, to ask for additional resources. I wrote down how many asked us to go to the commissioners for additional resources. They included the leaders of our employees' associations, the vice president of the association, citizens who came to speak, teachers who came to speak. We received emails suggesting we go to the commissioners to ask for additional resources. Some board members were even applauding when speakers came and suggested that, which I suppose is their right. Now's the opportunity to make the amendment in order to go to the commissioners and ask for more resources to provide an increase in the salary pool. I heard candidates suggest going to the commissioners last fall during the campaign. I know that the associations were pretty vocal in the campaign about being willing to go to the commissioners for the resources that we need. This, this is the moment when we can make that ask. I guess I'm just surprised that there's not, that there's not a motion to do that. But if there's not, there's not, I guess we go forward from here.
Mrs. Bright?
Yes, Ms. Williams. My thought is that we should at least attempt to find money within our budget before we go to the commissioners and make that ask. And we have looked, I have looked, I have proposed an amendment. Somehow, we are able to end quarters with money that goes into the fund balance. And again, it seems to be, for the past two years, about $3 million. So, that leads me to believe that somewhere in here, we have made some high estimates as to what we can be expecting to pay out in expenses. Perhaps I'm wrong in that. Maybe this will be, 2016 will be the year that nothing goes into the fund balance. But I think the commissioners would expect and appreciate if we looked at our own budget as carefully as we could to make some tough decisions. And I think that's what happened here this evening.
One of you, I think she's finished. Yes. Who was?
I don't know.
Both hands were up together.
Well, I, again, respectfully disagree. We may not have found money in this particular budget that was given to us or that we've worked on for some time. The superintendent's proposed, and now our proposed budget. We, we found, I believe it was, what, Chris, $2.6 million? We have less in, in our, what we're getting from the state and the county, a total of approximately 2.6, or what is it?
Approximately 2.5.
2.5 million dollars. So, we cut 2.5 million dollars out of our budget because we didn't have the income that we had last year. So, I think that, that's not completely accurate, with all due respect. Two and a half million dollars is a lot to cut out of a budget, and it's been done. My motion was, again, to, to add to the, to the, our teacher contingency force to, for a total of $700,000, $800,000, $850,000. You know, I'm willing to go to the commissioners myself and make that ask, and I probably would support, I, I don't want to be the one to make the motion, to ask for X number of dollars from the commissioners beyond this, but I probably would be willing to support it without knowing the outcome. But I do think that this budget is austerity. It's, you know, we have made cuts, the superintendent has made cuts, they've looked at a lot of line items. So, I believe that we've done our due diligence. We are just in a tough year. So, you know, if, if going to the commissioners is somebody's desire, let's have at it. But I don't think it's fair to say that we don't have the courage to make cuts, because there are a lot of cuts in this particular budget.
Mrs. Fisher?
Well, in addition to the, the money that Mr. Ridenhour has spoken to, that we had to cut out of the budget to start with, I, I don't think there's a lot of overestimating in this budget, because if you recall, we rebased these lines, and in most cases, they went down. I know there's a few things like this technology because of the new initiatives that went up, the ones that have been mentioned in a couple of amendments. But most line items have been reduced, not increased.
Madam President?
Could I ask a question? I've been pretty quiet so far, other than keeping the trains running. I know that during the public hearing, we also heard a request about OPEB, the other post-employment benefit. And I know the state is looking at sort of balancing their budget issues by going, reducing contributions to the state pension. And I, I think the president of WCTA asked about whether we would consider the OPEB, and I, just briefly looking at some numbers, I'm not sure we're funded well enough on that liability for our obligations to our retirees and future retirees. What, what is our funding? Here, Dr. Wilcox?
I'll speak to it a little bit, and then let Chris add in, but because a lot of people don't know our acronyms, it's, this is our, our other post-employment benefits, so it includes everything other than pensions. And so, we did take a look, and this year, we've contributed about $3 million from the general fund and $860,000 from our Medicare Part D subsidies. So, we've contributed about $3.8 million. Earlier tonight, you saw Bolton Partners here, who is kind of one of our thought partners in what our contributions have to be, net of the retirees' claims that are paid. The bottom line for this is that, right now, we have a structural deficit in terms of our payments into the fund. We're supposed to have, I think, Chris, is almost $200 million in the fund. Is that correct?
About 195 million at the end of the 30-year period.
At the end. Right now, we are 21% of the way there.
And we're about year eight, I believe.
In year eight. I think the actuaries actually said that we need to be funding about $8 million a year to make that fund work. Right now, you can see our contribution rate is about $4 million, so we're probably not going to get there. But, you know, there's probably not anyone sitting in this room, maybe other than myself and a couple of you who don't work for the school board, who don't want to see this fund fully funded. And all myself, because I probably will not live long enough to actually have the 10 years here where I can retire. I mean, I don't mean, like, physically live. I mean, after my rant tonight, I might not be here all that long. So, I'll turn it back to Chris, but right now, we're underfunded in terms of where we are.
I think Dr. Wilcox has adequately addressed it. We have been funding approximately $4 million a year. We ratcheted that back to about three, three and a half million dollars about two or three years ago. The reason we were funding $4 million a year is that our previous actuaries told us that that was a number that we needed to be looking at. Our new actuaries, when we went, went with Bolton Partners, they looked at it somewhat differently, their actuaries do, and the number actually became about $8 million per year. In talking with some other LEAs in the state, their actuaries are calculating it pretty much the same as Bolton does. So, we believe that we probably had a, a calculation problem with our previous actuary. We probably should have been funding around 6 to 8 million dollars all along, as opposed to 4.
And you say we're in year eight?
We're in year eight of, of OPEB. And we're, we've got, so we've got about 22 more years to get to that 195. Now, given the trajectory of healthcare costs and that sort of thing, that 195 could go to 2 and 1/4, could go to 250 by the time we get there.
Yeah, I get that. All right. Any?
Well, I just, I want to just kind of build on something that Dr. Harding's said, because I too heard people say that, you know, this, this budget, and I'm going to say, well, well-intentioned, wasn't sufficient. So, one of the things I did, based on comments that were made by Mr. Becker, who's in the audience today, is I called around to see... audience today, is I called around to see who else, what other counties, were asking for money beyond maintenance of effort. And I asked my network of superintendents in Pizam, and I got back 21 responses. And there are two districts, not including Washington County, that are not asking for money beyond maintenance of effort this year with their county commissions. So it would not be out of the norm, out of the realm of possibility. Do I not understand that our county commissioners are perhaps a bit more conservative than some? Yes, I understand that. But I will tell you that when you look at this list, some folks are asking for an awful lot of money. Our neighbors just across the hill here in Frederick are asking their commissioners for $22 million beyond maintenance of effort. This is the third consecutive year that where they've asked for double digits. Just a little ways down the road, Hartford is asking for $28 million beyond maintenance of effort. So it's not beyond the realm of possibility for people to ask. Asking and getting are two very different things. But, you know, to quote someone who stepped up, you know, you can never realize what you don't ask for.
Madam President.
Yes, Dr. Harding.
Just following up on that briefly, I mean, building on what Mr. Reidenhour said, we, I mean, there are cuts. I think the notion that we haven't cut, I don't see it reflected in the numbers here. I mean, the superintendent, in his work, brought us $5.9 million in cuts.
First tier.
$500,000 of which this board told him we're not willing to make. And those $5 million in cuts include a lot of things. Licensed practical nurses, development coordinator, an associate superintendent, construction funds, capital projects funds. There are materials for science, technology, engineering, and math. There are a lot of cuts in here. I don't think that we ought not go to the commissioners because we haven't made cuts already to our budget. Cutting $5 million is over 2% of the budget. And I would add, too, commissioners during the campaign were often asked about supplying funds above maintenance of effort to the Board of Education. And one of the responses they gave was, well, we haven't been asked. So again, I'll state my willingness to support a motion, but if none's forthcoming, then I guess we'll take the budget that we have.
All right. Any other amendments? We need to wind up with a balanced budget at the end of the evening to vote on. So far, it is balanced with one amendment. All right. The motion on the floor is Dr. Harding's. Those in favor of the amended budget as finalized, the final product this evening? All those in favor of that budget? Student concurs with the majority. The motion passes four to three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and patience with us. All right. That finishes our action items this evening. And Dr. Wilcox, I know part of your report has changed, but you can explain that?
Tonight, we were going to present an economic value of the public school system in Washington County. We've participated in a study with an outreach network, business community outreach network. But because Mimo Dericker, who is the principal investigator in the study, has come down, he could not make it this evening, so we're going to defer the study and talk about it at some time in the immediate future, probably at the next board meeting, if he's available. I think the numbers within that economic study are going to be enlightening for many about how the school system, through its payroll and through its efforts within the community, is really an economic driver, as opposed to, some might think, a drain on the economy. So we'll talk about that. The only, we had a number of things that came from the budget, so I don't need to spend more time talking about classes. I did want to say to the folks who raised the issue at Cascade, we've taken a very careful look at that. I think we've probably discussed that to the point that we don't need to go any further with it. So if the parents who came to talk to us about classes at Cascade want to reach out to me, I'd gladly talk to you on a personal level, if you're watching this evening's meeting. I also wanted to follow up and mention the OPEB fund and the structural deficit that we're facing, but because we've already dealt with that in the budget amendment, I won't spend any time there. I wanted to, however, mention that for those people who were watching and were concerned that we were charging our teachers at North High for paper, that is not true. We are watching our pennies at North High and have had some conversations with the entire faculty, including the faculty reps, about how we need to be thoughtful in our paper usage, but there's been no charge to any teacher for materials. Material lines are always short, material lines are always tough, so hard decisions are made. But again, we've not, we're not charging teachers for supplies. And then finally, the other thing I wanted to point out, I got an update today on the North High stadium project. And after the boosters complete their contribution, and we factor in what North High has been paying from gate receipts and other revenues, we hope by the end of this year that we'll have only $80,000 left on that debt, and we have a plan to erase it all. So we're moving forward with that. And I want to thank Principal Peggy Pugh for her efforts, Principal McNarin also, who got the ball rolling before he took another position within the district. Have really done some nice work on working with the Booster Club. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out the Herculean efforts of Doug Fiery, who is the president of the Booster Club, who has made calls to previous donors and others to help collect those pledges that were still outstanding, but also to lead the boosters in kind of a united front to close off that debt. And I think that's important for our community to know, particularly as we begin to talk about some other public-private partnerships with other schools around their athletic facilities, that the community, when they say they'll do something, they do do it. So thank you to all.
Thank you very much. There is no personnel action this evening, so we go directly to the reports to the board from our standing committees. Mr. McHose, welcome back.
Good to be back. Student government met last Tuesday. We had the pleasure to have the mayor come and talk to us and answer our questions. I think it was helpful to us. We got more of an understanding about what the city government is doing to improve Hagerstown. Our next meeting will be the first Tuesday of next month, and it should be at the board.
Very good. Thank you. Curriculum and Instruction?
Curriculum and Instruction is scheduled to meet at 12 o'clock in the board conference room on March 24th. The agenda will be posted, and it includes a presentation on Apex. We are scheduled to meet with the county commissioners that day. So as of right now, the meeting is on, but make sure you check in case we cancel it. It's going to be close to getting in town in time for that.
Mrs. Williams, Facilities.
Yes, the Facilities Committee was scheduled to meet next Tuesday, March 24th, and that meeting is being canceled, and we will meet in April.
Thank you. Mr. Jasper, Finance.
The Finance decided that since we will be going to the county, or the county commissioners, yeah, we will be holding all fires in our next meeting until April.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, Policy.
The Policy Committee met March 10th and began reviewing the first section of policies from the I section of our book. The section was recommended tonight for rescission and was accomplished. Next, we've considered policies ADIA and AF, which deal with the board's philosophy of education. And we believe that this topic should be covered by the entire board and would recommend a work session to be held sometime after the budget and negotiations are all settled and behind us. We looked at policy GCBDA, the Family and Medical Leave Act. We had a number of grammatical changes made there, and that was sent back to staff to add a legal definition of next of kin, will be probably coming up at our next board meeting. Finally, we reviewed ILB, Test Security, and that, of course, was passed tonight. I also have a report of the Ad Hoc Committee.
Sure.
Ad Hoc Committee on Board Communications met this morning. We reviewed the charge to the committee and then commenced to analyze Washington County Board of Education's operating processes and covered maybe half of that document. We've made some changes as we've proceeded for recommendation to the whole board. The committee members were asked to read through the policies that are communication-related and the other materials that were handed out today for our next meeting, and that is on March 31st at 10:00 a.m.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. Mr. Reidenhour, Human Resources?
Yes, the HR Committee will meet the 24th at 9:00 in the board conference room.
Very good. Any MAB reports? Ms. Harshman, Legislative Report, Mr. Trotta. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a number of bills that we've been tracking during the session, and we wanted to provide you with an update on those particular bills. The first is the Alternative Certification Bill. This is the bill that would authorize our Board of Education to provide methods for alternative certification in critical shortage teaching positions. There was a hearing last week on the House side on March, on March 12th, and then on the Senate side on March 11th. And the committees are now reviewing that particular bill and will continue to track the work within the committees. I next would turn to Senate Bill 71, which is known as the Reappointment of Superintendent Bill. The hearings on this particular bill have been completed, and once again, we're waiting reports from the House Ways and Means Committee and the Senate Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs Committee. A new bill was introduced, I believe Thursday or Friday of last week. This is Senate Bill 924. It's referred to as Private Financing Authority. At this point, it's very similar to the bill that we were looking at here, but this would allow boards of education across the state of Maryland to seek private financing. This has just been introduced, or has not been much activity at this point on that particular bill. Moving to the Burden of Proof Bill, as you may recall, this currently, under Maryland law and federal law, in IEP or Special Education Due Process Hearings, the burden of proof rests upon the moving party, which in most cases is the parent. This bill would shift that burden of proof to local boards of education. This is a measure that we have opposed, that MAB has also opposed. There have been hearings on this particular bill, and we're awaiting the results of the committee reports on this bill. Next, moving to the Charter School Bill, as you may recall, my last report, I indicated this would dramatically change public education in Maryland. This bill would afford charter schools, and when it was first introduced, special funding, grant exceptions to requirements that local boards of education have to follow. And we received a communication from Dr. Wilcox and the Superintendents Association indicating that the bill has been dramatically amended. It's not even close to the original measure that was introduced, and many of the objections that we noted have been now addressed and have been taken out of the bill. So we'll continue to monitor this particular bill, because as we draw closer to the session, the level of activity increases, and sometimes there are changes at the last minute. But at this point, the bill is in a form that's far more acceptable. And finally, we had the Post-Labor Day Bill. This is a bill that would require every local board of education to commence its school year after Labor Day. There was a hearing on the House side on February 26th and on the Senate side on March 11th, and thus far, the committee has not issued, the committees have not issued reports on this particular bill. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. My colleague, Dr. Harding, any comments? I would just add, I was at MAB's Legislative Committee meeting on Monday, and I would confirm several of your comments. The Charter Reform Bill has really reduced in size, and I'm not sure exactly, and no one seems to be sure, what may pass through, out of the committee, and what form that may take. Something to do, maybe the lottery method, and something to do with the principles seem to be the two that might have some staying power. The Post-Labor Day, again, the conversation around the table at MAB was that that seems to be losing momentum. And you've already gone over the due process. There was discussion that they feel like that is not expected to pass as well. The Senate Bill 924, the statewide version of the bill that we put in earlier, or at least introduced and then withdrew, MAB decided, voted on not to take a position on that one. Some interesting, very short information on the capital budget. This year, again, it's $250 million that will be bonded for construction projects. An additional $30 million will be set aside strictly Pago. Funding, interesting, in the past, counties that saved money on projects, that contingency money, has always come back to us and hasn't counted against the following year's allotment of capital dollars. And it looks like the $30 million Pago, that they may actually, the state may choose to keep the money that we saved and redistribute it among other county projects, rather than are getting that back. I didn't know that was a practice. I thought it was codified, because it's been helping us out for a few years, and that may very well not be available to us in the future. Any questions, legislative questions from anyone? All right. Future agenda items. I think as we've, whoops. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. I'm sorry. It's getting to the end of the agenda, and I'm running out of energy. I guess the main thing on the future agenda items would be the, what we've all talked about, and that is the Commissioner Joint Meeting on the 24th. We will be meeting at their place downtown. And again, there are several items on that. We'll be, I believe it's a quarterly adjustment, it's the budget, and we will be asking them about money that they've set aside, or we would hope that they would set aside for capital projects. So that's an interesting conversation that we will have on the 24th. Just seeing if there's anything else. We will have a work session on April 7th, which we will get another report back from our redistricting group, our FEAC group, and that'll be at 8:00 in the morning. And of course, every Friday, you receive an updated agenda, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know. All right. We are down to board member comments, and as suggested, we're going to start at the other end with Mr. Reidenhour.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things, if you would, please, and I apologize, this will take a little bit of time. Two things I had the opportunity to attend, and I greatly appreciated that opportunity. First was the Daughters of the American Republic, their T for the Outstanding Students in Washington County. They choose a student from each school in Washington County and offer scholarship money to those students based on their efforts as citizens. It is really a nice event. The other thing, I had the opportunity to go to Annapolis and be at the dinner and recognition of our Blue Ribbon School, Smithburg High School. of our Blue Ribbon School, Smithburg High School. It was, it was a nice event. Food stunk, but other than that, it was, it was a lot of fun. But it was nice to see our school recognize the only high school in Maryland this year to receive Blue Ribbon recognition. I do want to read something into the record again, if you don't mind. One of my colleagues spoke to, at the end of the meeting the other day, spoke to the technology initiative and asked some very pointed questions. And I thought about it, and I thought, you know, a lot of these questions, I believe, have been answered. So, I went back and looked at my notes and reviewed the materials that I had received. And I wanted to go through some of those questions and point out what I see as the answers. First question was, what is the plan? And my understanding of the plan is it's to provide a device appropriate to students' needs as they learn and master the Maryland college and career-ready standards. There are a lot of variables and entry points. It was intentionally decided to provide flexibility to an implementation team to deal with variables and things such as professional development needed, variables in the devices selected, and configurations for those devices, the expertise of our teachers and the capabilities of our learners. It presented a timeframe to implement a plan for over 1,700 teachers and 20,000 students. The number of years to implementation, the framework that I saw spoke to a three-year implementation plan. The funding source, the question was, what was the funding source? And that, this was brought out several times. Staff and superintendent spoke to one- and two-year funding coming from a reserve established by the board, with the pool being supplemented, if possible, from existing general fund purchasing lines during years of one and two. And the reason for that, if the funds were available, would have the effect of accelerating the implementation and increasing the likelihood that students would have digital access sooner. Third year involved and beyond, excuse me, the funding would come from a number of lines within the budget, most likely classroom and instructional programs, supplies and materials and property lines. What's the funding required? Once we reach 100%, that number was pretty consistent, was $3.471 million in years, in third year of the initiative. Four and five would be the same amount as we get into a lease program. So, the other question was, where does the funding come from each year, and what budget line would be reduced to pay for the initiative? As our students get this access to technology, funds could come, are currently used for instructional supply materials, and acquisition of technology repurposed to support this initiative. For example, resources that currently used to equip schools with computer labs, laptop carts, iPad sets, et cetera, won't be necessary anymore. Consequently, that money would be available and reallocated to support the initiative. The document talks about additional staff members. This was one of the questions, how would they be funded? The only position, and I called Dr. Wilcox and came in and sat down and asked him about this one, because I believed this to be accurate, but I wasn't sure. The only position that was discussed was initiative supervisor. And he told me that this position would be converted, a converted vacant position with no additional cost to WCPS. And the last question was, staff spoke to the possibility, or excuse me, a full explanation of PD, cost, and process. And our staff spoke to the possibility of a survey being given by the Vanguard School participants to determine the variable nature of the professional development that would be needed. Some would need device support, some would need application support, others would need support integrating the technology in their classroom. And given that this variance would require a menu of services, you know, that would be different for different schools, some training would be delivered online, and other training may require traditional training with a supplement for the teachers involved. You know, thinking about those questions and thinking about this initiative, I think back to three years ago, and the panic that I felt, and I'm sure every member of this board felt, because we were looking at Park and the necessity of taking all of our tests online, increasing bandwidth, so that we would be able to handle those technical issues for this testing program. If you speak to teachers in schools right now, most of them will tell you that so far there have been minimal glitches. And I think that's a credit to our people and a credit to our staff and our tech department, that they have been able to get to this point in that three-year period of time. So, I believe based on this, that there's significant and adequate information to make a decision on a technology initiative and trust our people to roll out something that will be of quality and will service our students effectively in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Ms. Fisher?
I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Gessler?
I have nothing.
Uh-oh. Dr. Harding?
No comments from him.
Mrs. Williams?
No comments.
Mrs. Harshman?
Nothing.
Mr. McHose? All right, then I'll finish up. I did want to, and I know this may become part of the communication plan that the ad hoc committee is looking into, but I felt it was important to try to put this out. There is an expectation by all of our partners, certainly our bargaining units as well as each other, that during closed session, members of the Board of Education are provided with very confidential information. And disclosure of confidential closed session matters could subject the Board of Education and the board members to civil liability, which would result in litigation expenses to the school system and possible personal liability to a board member. In order to avoid expensive litigation, confidential information in a public record cannot be publicly disclosed. The unlawful disclosure of a public record that is protected from disclosure could subject the responsible party to criminal sanctions. In a civil proceedings, the offender could be subject to actual damages, and the court may assess counsel fees and litigation expenses. The public disclosure of confidential information also impairs the Board of Education's ability to engage in an open and frank discussion of a matter of importance that is of a highly confidential nature. A board member who discloses confidential information may be privately or publicly sanctioned by the Board of Education. The disclosure of confidential information could give rise to the removal of a board member pursuant to Section 3-1301 of the Education Articles. With that, we are at the end of our agenda, and the meeting stands adjourned.